Call this meeting in order. Lonnie, would you deliver the invocation please, sir?
Lord, thank you for the opportunity to get it together and conduct city business. Lord, we thank you for the rain. We thank you for the opportunity to involve the visitors here tonight. Lord, we just have to be mayor and council conducting services in your city for the benefit of the city, it's asked for. Amen.
GMW, please.
By the allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council has a copy of the agenda. And... I've got that. It might not have been on their agenda, which is in yellow. Cold Road Annexation Update, item C under Old Business. You may have received one discussing the Piedmont Hospital helicopter pad, which is item C. Item G, paving project work change order, that's item G. That should, it could be an addition to what you've seen. And item O, alcohol license request. Mr. Sunny under what, item O? With those additions, would entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Be in all favor of a show hand? Thank you, council. Been subbed the May 1st, 2017, regular meeting, Ms. Hoare?
Regular council meeting Monday, May 1st, 2017. Mayor Weaver called a meeting to order conflict at 6:00 p.m. He requested Lonnie Waters give the invocation. Councilmember Jim Loney led a recital of the Pledge of Allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked if the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Councilmember Anson Navy made a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Jim Loney seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. It is noted that Tony Fountain is absent from this meeting. City clerk Lisa Boyl read the minutes of the April 3rd, 2017 regular meeting. Councilmember Jim Loney made a motion to adopt the minutes as read. Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. There is no old business to discuss. Item A, under New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Walt Cagle and Johnny Hyatt with Pickens County Sportsman's Club to present to council the dates of the kids fishing rodeo at Cold Creek. Mr. Cagle stated that the dates of the rodeo would be May 17th through the 20th, 2017, and requested permission from council to use the cold property exclusively before the event on those dates. Councilmember Jim Loney made a motion that the Pickens County Sportsman's Club had used to the Cold Creek property for the fishing event, May 17th through 20th. And councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Item B, under New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Lonnie Waters to present to council the results of the April 18th, 2017 bid for paving project number 2017-001. Mr. Waters stated that the bid calculation is as follows. Bartow Paving Company, 497-655-60. Blount Construction Company, 493-416-26. Caldwell Construction Incorporated, 693-500. CW Matthews Construction Company, 569-988-55. Johnson Paving, 471-580. Northwest Georgia Paving, 505-977-60. Mr. Waters stated that the low bid was 471-580 from Johnson Paving. Mayor Weaver stated that the city has used Johnson Paving on previous paving projects and the contractor, and that the contractor was satisfactory. Councilmember Jim Loney made a motion to approve the low bidder, Johnson Paving, for the paving project. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item C, under New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Lonnie Waters to present to council a proposal from Prostate Consulting Services for a GPS mapping program. Mr. Waters stated that this system could convert the city's existing orders to a map to a standardized GIS database, which would be more accurate than the existing mapping system. He stated that this system would also be useful in the building department if it would map city boundaries and zoning. He stated that the total cost, which would be built in phases, would amount to $22,775. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to purchase the GPS system and software, $22,775. Councilmember Jim Loney seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Item D, under New Business, Mr. Waters presented a proposed annexation of a portion of Cold Road into the city. He stated that the city owns both sides of the road and some areas from the bridge to the top of the mountain. Mayor Weaver stated that this annexation would have to go before the planning commission for recommendation, then to council for approval. He stated that he is asking council approval to move forward with the annexation. Councilmember Jim Loney made a motion to move forward with a potential annexation of Cold Road as presented and as according to the map provided. Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Items E and F, under New Business, the mayor recognized Chief Steve Roper to present to council proposed repairs to the Burton Street barn and also the need for a new roof on the city's fire station. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to move forward with obtaining bids for the two items that were budgeted for 2017. Councilmember John Faust made such motion. Councilmember Jim Loney seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Item G, under New Business, Mayor Weaver stated that the city park was closed as of April 28th for necessary repairs. He stated that he would like council to approve $15,000 to make repairs or replace playground equipment. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to approve the city spend up to $15,000 on the city park. Councilmember Sunny Crocker seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item F, under New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Finance Director Lisa Wolf to present the 2016 budget amendment to council for approval. Councilmember Jim Loney made a motion to approve the amendment. Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Economic Development for Jerry Nat Patel was not available to give a report. Finance Director Lisa Boyl gave a financial report for the month of April 2017. Lonnie Waters gave the animal control report for the month of April 2017. Chief Greg Lovell gave a report of police activities for the month of April 2017. Chief Steve Roper gave a report of fire activities for the month of April 2017. Councilmember John Faust gave an update on JYSI activities. Being no other business to come before council, councilmember Jim Loney made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Council is scheduled to convene next, as the regular council meeting will be held June 5th, 2017.
Entertained a motion?
Motion accepted.
Motion to approve the minutes that is read?
Check.
Motion is seconded, any discussion? Being in all favor of a show hand? Thank you, council. Under Old Business, first item, Mr. Hinton, Assistant Chief, Burton Street Barn Repairs and Fire Department. And I will call you Vaughn for the record.
Okay. But it's mayor and council. Chief Roper came to you guys last month and discussed and we actually did put out the bid, the roof of the Burton Street barn. However, there was no bids turned in for that project. So, we've gone back to the quotes that we had prior to the bid process. We had two quotes turned in, one by Fountain Roofing and one by Allen Wind Construction. The roofing, Fountain Roofing's bid on the barn was $10,200. And for the fire station, it was $15,930. Again, that was Fountain Roofing. Allen Wind's price for the barn was $12,319. And for the barn, it was $12,250. Both of these quotes doesn't, doesn't cover any repair to any of the structural integrity of the building. It's just simply to replace the metal on both buildings. Anything that's found rotten underneath or any damage to any of that wood will be incurred later across, you know, as they find it. I don't believe we're going to have many issues, if any, with the fire station. As far as the barn, I can't speak for that because there is some damage with it, but I don't know what, you know, what we're expecting. So, I guess what we're looking for tonight is for council to approve us to go ahead with this project.
Let me clarify, if I may. The, Mr. Fountain was the low bidder on the barn? He's low bid on the barn and Allen Wind is low bid on the fire station. And there's, these are individuals, so we can actually award separately?
Yes, okay. They were priced separately, so we could award one to the, for the barn and one for the fire station.
Would entertain a motion, council?
Motion, we accept the low bids for barn and fire station roof.
So, that would be Fountain with the barn and Wind with the fire station?
Yes, sir.
Give a second. Motion is seconded, any further discussion? Being in all favor of a show hand? Thank you, council.
Lisa, do you put those bids in the minutes?
Well, I put bids in the minutes. I usually don't put quotes in the minutes, but I can.
Either way, that's right. You, like this last time, you had them stated in there.
In fact, that these quotes are now the official price, if they accept this one.
Right.
Thank you. Item B, generator, immersion generator, police department.
Immersion generator for the police department. We applied for this back when we applied for the generators for the water treatment and wastewater treatment facilities and the wells. At that time, the generator did not meet the requirements for the grant. But as of last year in, I'm gonna say, it was October of 2017, we were awarded, when we went back and asked for the additional money for the grants for the generators that we had. Because of the price increase over the two years we've been working on the grants, there was those increase. We went back, asked for those. At that time, they did approve the police department's generator, but it was not in the bid process. So, what we have is, I had Caldwell give us a price, the company that has did all of the work for the generators that we have now, I simply went back to them because of the quality of work that they've done, the time and manner that they've done that work, as well as so we will have one contact for all the generators inside the city. So, we went back to Caldwell and got them to bid that. And they came back to us with a price of $45,000. The original price that we had put, when we put in for this grant originally in 2014, that original price for that generator was, let me find my notes here, $42,181.50. The price today is $45,000. However, when we went back and asked for that additional funding, we were awarded $49,082. So, with the cost of the generator being $45,000, this, the grant money being $49,000, that would allow us to put the gas meter and stuff for this generator in as well, under that grant. And of that $49,082, the city share of that will be $7,362.30. $7,362.30 will be the city's cost.
So, the additional funding was, did or did not include this additional?
It did. The additional funding did include.
Where did we have the budgeted? It was budgeted, it was budgeted for 17, because I didn't know how they were not going to bid on the project, but I, but I budgeted for it.
Okay. And that was my question?
The match and the GMA fee portion.
Yeah, so the city's part was actually put in the bid for the police department.
That was my question. I just wanted to make sure we had it in.
And the budgeted tariff in the amount, correct?
Yes.
Any other questions? Would entertain a motion?
Motion, we accept you, the police department.
Motion to approve the bid. Motion is seconded. Discussion. Any further discussion? Being in all favor of a show hand? Thank you, council. Thank you, Lonnie.
Has that ever happened before?
Yeah, yeah. The occasion was not all that long.
Under New Business, item A, annual audit presentation for 2016. Oh, goodness, I marked that and I didn't, you've got to sit real still. I've got one more item, item C. Cold Road, I think I just want to skip this intentionally. Lonnie, would you come up? Cold Road Annexation Update, we've got a little better news than just an update, council. Lonnie, would you?
Mayor and council, I brought to you last month about Cold Road, being the county was wanting us to annex it in to the top of the S-curve. The city actually owns most of the property on both sides of the road. State says that you own both sides of the street, it's in the city anyway. So, the county, we told them that we were bringing it to your attention. The county went ahead, I just found out this afternoon, they had the road surveyed by James Bowlin. I've got a drawing here with a hit of certification on it. And Landrum, Landrum has already filed a quit plane deed for that section of road. And I'm here to ask for you to vote for to annex by intergovernmental agreement. They don't have to go before the planning commission like we first thought, since the attorneys in the county has already done this. And so, we're asking you to approve this and then the city limits will start immediately. At the top, once we notify everybody, now more and more than everybody.
Mr. Pickett?
Yeah.
You want to overrule attorney?
We talked about it.
Okay, good. Didn't want to supersede our attorney. Did you have a chance to talk with him, Mr. Pickett?
No, I have not. I told him.
Okay. So, you're good with this and this is going to supersede any formal annexation? We just own the road and we own, the city actually owns property on both sides. We moved the sign and therefore it's in the city. It'll be patrolled by the city and be recognized as city property. Okay, with that, I believe all we will need would be for votes from council to accept the gift from the county?
Accept conveyance. Do we still need a motion on zoning?
No, I think we'll be just taking the property as, as a gift in a government group. Mr. Pickett?
That's close to the van.
So, we had other property owners along that stretch or are we just annexing a portion of?
Just the road.
Just the road.
And with the city, Mr. Griffith family owns a portion?
There is right at the top of the garden ground, right hand side, there's probably, I don't know, 50 feet, that belongs to Mr. Batcock, Mr. Griffith. And then on that point, right at the top of the S-curve, there is a small tract of land beyond the top of the S-curve that belongs to people in Holly Springs. I have physically went to their house. I've not been able to make contact with them, but the street itself, both sides of the road is owned by the city of Jacksonville.
And the property that is not the city's, is not being annexed?
Right.
There's a large amount of land there too, right? Believe there's a little slip. There was on the, I'm just, on the right hand side going up the hill.
I think that's on the Griffins. They have part of that mineral right there.
Right.
So, it's going to stop this short with Ken Gary Reese's voice.
Just, just before you get Gary Reese's driveway on the left.
Can you clarify, if we, if we own property, we don't necessarily have, if we own the property, we don't necessarily annex it, is that correct?
Well, we have annexed the Cold Road from the original city limits line to the bridge. And after we did that, the city purchased property on both sides of the road, including the mines all the way to the top of the hill, except the small property that are contiguous with the road, except the city. And so, when the county gift, or what conveys the property to the city, it'll become city-owned and we can go through legal annexation or accept the gift from the county because then we move the sign and then we could check to make sure we are legal without having to advertise, do all the things we normally do. But we have annexed a lot of property by continuation and through legislation.
You're authorized to accept that as a gift and that's all it is.
Okay.
And it's immediately in it by default?
By the recording of the deed.
And it's just the road?
It's just the road.
Not property off the side?
Don't touch anybody.
But the property that we own on either side of the side, is that in the city?
It is. It slides off at the tip of the bridge to our property. We're kind of like a Y there. Now, this will just, it'll fill in the map.
Can we own property contiguous with the city and it not be part of the city? Is that a silly question?
Yeah, well.
It's certainly more not.
We, we, we want it to be in the city as soon as it comes ownership. It always has. We annexed it in the past through various meetings, but if they, if the county made a request of us to annex the property, we will be going through the process of advertising etc. But since we're not actually advertising any private sector property, we'll feel no need. But we could make a phone call tomorrow to back up our legal opinions with GMA and maybe even Department of Community Affairs.
Well, I'm trying to get through the, 130 pages I've been looking at.
Did I get a motion in to accept?
Do we, do we want a call to conveyance or a gift?
Accept the proposed gift to the city.
Make a motion to accept, the city accept the motion. We have road on Cold Road from county.
And surveyed by J. Steve Bowlin.
Surveyed by us.
And a quit plane by Landrum, Landrum.
Need a second. Motion is seconded. I think I heard Ann first. She's looking left side. Any discussion? Being in all favor of a show hand? Thank you, council. Now, under New Business, item A, annual audit presentation for 2016. Sam Lattin, Russian Company?
Thank you for having me, Terry Hilton. I am here to report your December 31st annual audit. Right there is running, you've got the reports and we've also got the presentation here. I'm going to go through the presentation, all along within the financial, but most of the, I'm going to hit the highlights. I just want to say thank you for retaining us. You have a very good staff and any company ever needed anything, they were available and that does make things good. It was a good, good year. So, I'm going to start with saying thank you, Lisa, Lindsay and Stella. They did a very good job of everything else. On page two of the presentation.
Just for the record, Rachel's calling on Whitefish, you need to thank her for announcing the word.
Of course. Thank, thank both of them as well.
Will you come back next year?
That, that's right, I do. This is the audit opinion page and that's, that's the letter that comes with the audit. And I'm just going to go through the gist of what it says. Basically, the financial statements are your responsibility. The auditor is responsible for issuing the letter saying that it's fairly stated or not. That doesn't mean there are, there may not be little differences or anything like that, but on, on this letter, you got an unmodified opinion. That's, that's best you can get. I mean, we didn't have to change the letter, so that's very good. So, our job was to audit under generally accepted government auditing standards. That's what we, we did. Came up here for three or four days and dug through financial transactions. And at the end of that, we came up with an unmodified opinion at December 31st. And you're welcome to stop and ask me a question if anything comes up. Right behind the letter is the government-wide financial statements. These are full accrual statements. It's exactly what you'd have in an enterprise and that's on page 14 and 15, which is a statement of net position. That's, that's in government, that's what we call balance sheet. And then the statement activities, that's your income statement. And that's on page 16. It presents the results of the operations of the city. Moving to page four, want to highlight your net position and changing net position. If you look all the way to the right, revenues over expenses, that should have been up there. So, you see in 14, you guys made $871,000. And then 15, it went up quite, quite a bit and that was due to a contribution in a grant. If you guys remember, I think, I think there was some land that was purchased as well and some, some of that stuff. But this year, it just went down just a little, little bit. If you took that out, it would be down just a little bit. $692,000, which you made as a government, which is positive. Page five, the general fund. I'm just going to highlight a couple items here. Total revenue decreased about $58,000. Your motor vehicle taxes decreased about 54. Franchise taxes decreased about 37. Occupational tax decreased 20 cents. And then your fines and forfeitures went up about $58,000. So, that's, that's healthy. Your expenditures increased because in two areas. The park administration expenses are, capital light, that's about $170,000 increase. Your street expenditures decreased about 63 and that's due to less salaries, which we call personal services. If you take a look right under that, your unassigned fund balance, and I've got a chart on the next page, but what we like to do is we take your monthly expenses in the general fund and we'll divide your unassigned fund balance by that. And you've got about 39 months worth of expenditures sitting in your unassigned fund balance. So, that's, that's very healthy. I'm sorry, 39.7, you know, about 4.7 months, I apologize.
That's still very healthy.
Yes.
We sort of set a target years ago, about months. We're getting there.
So, it went up almost a full month compared to last year. There's a graph on page six and that's your general fund revenues and expenditures. You can see the blue line is your income and then your, the green line is your expenditures. Those have a gap between them. That's very good. So, that's something to be proud of. You're making money.
How about, can't we call it retained revenue? We don't want to get any tax breaks. We need that cash.
That's right.
Got business here, we need to.
Moving to page seven, just like I was talking about with your fund balance. As you can see, your unassigned and your total fund balance, you can see there's a trend there. It's gone up over the last three years. So, that's again another, another healthy sign there. Your water and sewer spot, revenues increased about $28,000. Your water sales increased about 37. Sewer sales are about $19,000 increase. Your leak checked dump fees increased $163,000. That's a 30% increase, so that's very good. Your miscellaneous operating revenues decreased last year. If you remember, there was a settlement of some debt and we had to recognize that income and you forgive debt, so that's why that's down this year. Your operating expenses increased about $224,000. Waste water treatment expenses increased about $100,000. Water treatment plant expenses decreased about 62 and your water distribution expenses increased about $183,000. Any questions? If you take a look at the next page, there's a graph there and you can see that your consistently your operating revenues are above your operating expenses, which is very good. You see your net operating this year was $420,000. We do issue a report on internal control and compliance and other matters. Every now and then, you know, being an auditor, we got to find something wrong. We, we did have one comment and your municipal corps, out of the 26 receipts that we traced, there were 11 that were late. And by late, I mean over seven days. Did, do we want to respond to that?
Yeah, I think the deposits didn't get to the bank. It was over seven days and our place chief.
Chief Lovell, would you come up and remedy our negative?
We correct that.
We, we give you our response, what we've done already.
You got to find out what he driving on there. I'm in trouble there. What we did is Lisa's plate and they responded to it. About seven days, several of them, there wasn't deposit. Young lady in charge of that takes it in. What she would do is she would, you know, there's sometimes we get a lot of money in paying fines and fine taxes and then sometimes there's nothing. Well, she would lock it up and I send it in. And what we've done, took, corrected by measure for that, we gave her a written counseling notice and basically the recommendation, replaced personnel file, also verbally warned on timeless deposit fund for police court receivables. As mayor's request, there will be one made daily. If there's no money, we're going to send one over anyway. Quote, form said no funds received. This form will be created and filled out by the fine kind, sent over to the financial department daily. So, that's what we've done to remedy that situation.
Thank you, sir.
All right?
Thanks, chief. It's 2003 month.
That was the wrong guy, wasn't it? Well, Lisa, that's the, that's a significant deficiency. It's not a material weakness, so it's not the worst you can have. But it sounds like you've got to respond very appropriately. There's some things that I have to say, and that is require communication. A lot of times, we do this through a letter. But since I'm here today, I'm just going to go ahead and read off the points. That way, we go ahead and do it down, and we won't have to write later. But the plan to perform the audit to obtain reasonable rather than absolute assurance that the financial statements are free and material statements. That's my responsibility as governor. We examine it on a test basis. And we assess whether you're following GAAP, Government Audit Standards, or excuse me, Government Accounting Standards. And you are. We believe we accomplished these objectives. The accounting policies are note to the financials. If you're having trouble sleeping, that's, that's a great way to get a little tighter. There were no new GAAP segments to adopt. There are a couple accounting estimates in your financial statements. And one of those is your depreciation. And the others are the allowance for doubtful accounts on your property tax and utility delivery receipts. So we thought they were appropriate. If we had any uncorrected audit adjustments, we would have those approved by management. And then, but we don't have any because we recorded everything. There were, I'm happy to report, there were no disagreements with management. There were no difficulties when we were trying to perform our audit procedures. I have received representation from, from you through the letter. And we are not aware of any consultants, management has with other counties or auditing matters. And that is everything else.
Questions, counsel?
My contact information is on the last slide. If anything comes up, you're more than happy to call or email me. Be more than happy to answer any questions.
Lisa, would you like to address the counsel of some state?
Actually, if y'all can, if we can get this approved tonight. It's due before the end of the month, the 30th?
That's right.
Of 20th, 21st, 30th. And we'll go ahead and let them file it with the state audit.
You'll be on file.
Department of Audits.
Community Affairs.
That's right.
With that, would entertain a motion to approve the presentation and accept this audit report? Got a motion? Motion is second, discussion? Being on my paper with your hands? Thank you, counsel. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you for having me.
It's always great to meet June, meet June the 30th.
It's always nice to get it done early, isn't it?
Thank you.
Lisa, thank you and all the girls. You did a great job.
I have mine.
Yeah.
Thank all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item B, Council Pete Mot Hospital has pulled back their request and they will not be here this evening. I have, I do not have an argument against anyone, so I'll give you an update when I find out what this plan is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you probably could tell on the presentation, this was kind of a, they were, it was a provisional plan. And I think the timeframe that the helicopter, the fact that they'd already went ahead and ordered the trailer before all the groundwork was done. They, Pete Mot requested they have representation here tonight as well. They decided to, I guess, lay down the trailer right where the old one is. And so we'll have to work on this in the future if they decide to move forward. So I appreciate it.
Thanks, thank you, sir. Item D, Department of Camera, Assistant Chief Hedrickson. You're obviously bringing you in tonight, isn't it?
I know.
We got a quote, another thermal imaging camera to replace one of the old ones that we have that's no longer in service. This item is in the budget. We had $8,000 budgeted for this item this year. The camera, and you missed it the other night. We brought one in for a demo at the work session. That camera price is $7,395. That camera allows us to see through smoke. It allows us to see heat, fire. And it takes us from going to the old days of searching a house where it would take 30 minutes, 20, 30 minutes to search a house with two people, where we literally searched that entire house in five minutes now. So that, that timeframe is, is, you know, it's just, it's a miracle that we can do it that quick. Not only that, but we can use it. We have children lost at night, adults lost at night. I shared a story with them from about eight years ago where we used it on Cove Road for a car accident where a person was ejected. Nobody knew there was anybody else in the car. Driver was adamant someone was with him. We took that camera, the old camera that we're replacing, scanned the Kudzu pile and found the guy rolled up in Kudzu about 50 yards from the car. Had we not had that, we might not have found that individual. So what we're doing is asking to replace that camera. That camera was bought, I think, in 1998, the old camera was.
Is it still functioning?
No, sure. It is not functioning at all. And there's, being that it is so old, that technology's so outdated, no one will even work on it anymore. With this new camera, there's also a driveway detection device that goes into the fire truck. It wires into the parking brake. So for some reason, on the scene, this camera, being expensive as it is, if it's not back in its cradle and you push the parking brake off, it sends an audible alarm to tell you that your camera is not in the truck. That way, it don't get left on the scene. So we're asking tonight for the approval to purchase this camera.
Does that price include the dock station?
That price does include the dock station, the land yard, the camera, truck charger, and extra battery.
And is that covered under our budget?
Yes, we had $8,000 in the budget for this item.
Any kind of motion?
I like the motion of approval of the camera for $7,395.
Motion to approve. Motion is second, any discussion? Being on my paper with your hands, same counsel. Item E, Kubota Skid Steer, Mr. Dave McKenna. Counsel, this is a continuation of a lot of equipment that we've been purchasing. And Dave will give you an update on the end of our lease and how we are, where we already at.
David, Mr. Mayor, counsel. We had a cat skid steer that we had leased. The lease was up as of today. We took this caterpillar skid steer back, returned it today. And we've been working on getting quotes from different vendors for Kubotas. We did our research that we did. And with having people close to us to work on it in Pickens and in Blue Ridge, that it would be more feasible for us to go with a Kubota instead of a caterpillar. So.
Being that caterpillars and counter, and David and I took it over today, took us two and a half, three hours, of course, we're talking head lunch. But if we've taken it back to either a Mason tractor or Nelson tractor, we're talking just a few minutes up down the road. And Kubota, we went and tried it out, tell a little bit about what we found.
It seems, it's very user-friendly. It's this particular one, we're going with an enclosed cab. It's heated and air-conditioned cab. The one has a demolition door on the front of it. So when we're bush hogging, that, if any brush or debris gets thrown back in your face, it won't shatter the glass and hurt you. But it's a really good piece of equipment. It's very powerful.
Let's talk about price and how it's going to be different. We purchased it versus the lease.
All right. The price that we got, the low quote that we got on this piece of equipment was $58,000. We had, Lisa had budgeted for, for the balloon note, some money. And I think we're going to.
I had, I had budgeted for us to purchase this cap. The balloon came due this year. And I had budgeted approximately $25,000 to go ahead and buy, buy the piece of equipment. Had that been, with the payments we'd already made plus the balloon, our fun, our cash out would have been $30,000, $31,000 approximately. If we do what they want to do, turn it in and purchase the Kubota. And this is a, a purchase, I'm going to finance it because, you know, a, the big loan that we were setting up for all the equipment to purchase this year, we'll get 2.42% interest rate, which is a really good rate. But our cash out this year versus the $31,000 will be $12,998. But that also, you know, you have to think about what we'll be paying this over five years, which will increase that loan, the payments out, principally interest, $12,000 a year approximately.
And we'll stay on track. Next year, we'll just be making payments like we were this year on the lease.
Right.
So it's going to be very, much easier to budget.
And I'm going to set that over the five years, just like everything else.
And with that, we got two quotes from the two dealers on 5/15.
And the low, the low quote was from Mason.
We can't call it both, elect them.
Nelson Tractor gave us a quote of $60,611. Mason Tractor gave us a quote of $58,000 for the same piece of equipment.
And what we did, David went, he went and asked them, basically saying, we're going to get quotes, we need your best price. And being very careful to be above-boarded fare, these are the prices they got. And David said, sure, this is your best price. And we bought, and the prices are what you have this evening. Of course, Mason Tractor is located in Pickens County. Nelson is, but the low bid is Mason Tractor. And we just purchased two pieces or three pieces of equipment from Mason Tractor. We bought several pieces in the past from Mason Tractor. Other prices have been in line.
They're just, they're just purchasing this. Are we paying taxes on this?
No.
So it's flat out?
Flat out. No, no advantage to us to lease this.
Was the prior lease five years? Is that what it was, Lisa? Do you remember?
Well, it was three. And then if you, if you purchased it, you paid this balloon this year.
And what's the lifetime of this equipment, the way we use it? What do you guess on that?
The particular one that we just turned in, thanks seven, about 700 hours. And we'd had it for three years. So, you know.
Should have been used more.
Yeah.
Yeah. But this, this would have life expectancy after it's paid off. And I, matter of fact, I wish we had financed the other one instead of leasing. We'd had it in stock today as part of our inventory. And then buy, pick up a new one when it's done. And then we, our equipment, I think, would be better off. So we're one behind right now for not having the cat on a lease. But this, we actually went through two leases with that particular unit.
This nice dollar has a brand-new uniloader or skid steer available. We have other ones, but the brand units. That we just turned in, three years off.
How many hours? Seven.
Do we have one?
We've got an old one. Got a couple of smaller.
Yeah.
This is a big one.
This is a five-year loan, as I said, in total interest. That will be paying a part, I would have in the total interest over the life of the loan as well.
I have that total though.
Two points.
I don't know.
Four to.
Two point four to.
Four to.
So it'll be M12, Lisa, to the loan, so would you just say?
Well, to the loan payment in the, in the next year. Not this, this year, we're actually coming up, we're not paying out as much as we would have, we paid that balloon off. A difference of $31,000 versus almost $13,000. So we'll, we'll come out to the good cash flow this year in my budget. But next year, we'll, it will increase the next four years after this year. It will increase our payments $12,000.
If we'd returned it and leased it, it could be the same thing. We just want to purchase it.
Still have the taxes.
No, no advantage, there's no tax break for us by leasing.
We didn't have a motion.
What kind of making a statement? I mean, it's.
Well, this one will have very little maintenance. It'll have, how many years warranty?
I think it has a one-year warranty on it.
And after that, we're responsible, even if it's leased, it tracks, repairs, whatever. Just like we own it.
This particular one, we took back. It needed new tracks, it needed new rollers. Just probably had used it so much on the asphalt during the snowstorms that we've had scraping the roads.
Well, we have a suspension now? I mean, we bought one.
Where are you going to buy it? It's written up there.
Well, I don't talk about it. I don't know what you're.
I got, I got a funeral tomorrow morning.
Do they have the training for this piece of machinery? I don't know. I buy it out. Well, I know that we do what we call circuits. Anytime we get a new piece of equipment, they'll.
Oh, they'll, they'll do that. Absolutely. Same way they did with our.
And then they'll, then you can send your operator down there for like two weeks. They should.
I don't know if those good weeks don't happen. But we, we operate these pieces of equipment. This is a very nice piece of equipment with all whistles and whatever you want to put on it from Kubota and things a cat don't have.
Who uses straight water?
Everybody who needs it. But this will be our main uniloader. We could use three or four more if we find them available. We've got to have one. We took this one back and we had to use it to pick up the tree on the road this morning. And we took it back with mud on it. So we've got to have one. Any other discussion?
700 hours and 36 months.
It could have been used a little more. I took it places where we're bush hogging, we'll, we'll probably pass it a little more.
About 20 hours a month usage.
So when you need it, you got to have it.
Entertained a motion?
That was a lack of motion. You can't get anything through that. Come on, counsel. We can, we can get this unilo ring.
I don't know what my problem with it is, except for 20 hours usage a month. It's a lot of money for 20 hours. But, you know, $12,000 a month, $12,000 a year lease, payments.
And after five years, we'll have one.
Well, we only had that old three year.
Well, we have other uniloaders as well. But they're older models and they're, and when we, we have, we did not do that many planning policies.
Then you don't, you don't find there's, you don't find there's an advantage of leasing there?
No. Talk to the salesman. So we don't lease them.
Probably cost a lot.
I don't think convenient.
I don't know. I can go ask Home Depot. Come on, we're in the water business, get your unilo. All right, David, we don't need you. Let's go. Thank you, David. Would we need to update Lonnie?
Good morning, counsel. The only thing I have to update this evening is I got an email from Mr. Clayton Bennett with a DOT. He has volunteered to come up here anytime after Tuesday evening. So Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week to meet with the city to discuss the structure and the details. He indicated in his email that the report that I quoted you about the different items that was wrong with the bridge is what he's placing everything on. And he would very much like to see the bridge saved also. And he would meet with us and discuss it. Also, I got a phone call from Mr. Mike Sweeney from Pruitt Railroad Bridge Company out of Florida. He called me today. He's on his way back up here to do some work for Pruitt Railroad in the Tate Nelson area. And he said that he would be glad to meet with us and also give us, he said until he knew it. he said until he knew exactly what the details were going to be as far as the DOT, he could give us some estimated cost like I discussed with you the other day. And he would like to try to meet with us sometime this week. And he gives strictly an estimate that would give us a baseline to start from. And then if the DOT changes anything, that could be increased or decreased from his estimate. It would strictly be an estimated cost, just give us a nice ideal.
You think it'd just be better for us to give us the worst-case scenario? That way we got the number with it.
Well, I mean, we don't know what the worst-case scenario is.
We're talking about the tonnage and stuff going over the bridge.
Right.
So we'll build a high tonnage and go from there.
Well, we don't know what it would take to increase the bridge up a ton. These, uh, we don't know what the DOT would request. I mean, they might request restructuring the entire underneath of the bridge, or they might say change three pipelines and it's sufficient. So, uh, I mean, we don't know what the worst scenario would be, other than rebuilding the whole bridge. So, I mean, I can request whatever you, whatever council would like, uh, but I, I mean, we don't know.
Given us additional information, we don't know what the state's going to require yet. Let's get, let's get all the information we can.
Mr. Bennett said stated that he would be up here. He can come in anytime, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday this week, and meet with the city and discuss it. He's with the DOT.
Well, it's like we talked about in that workshop, we didn't want anybody else, and we got to satisfy the majority of the people.
Right. I mean, as long as they're satisfied and we can fund the project, then we can save the bridge as far as transportation going across it, just like it's always been. But, uh, we do have to satisfy the deal. So.
Do you have any questions, Cal? Are you going to set something up?
Yes, we can, yes. Whatever the mayor and council like, we can say that whatever day and meet with both of these representatives and see what they have to say.
Thank you, John.
Okay.
Don't take any emotion on that, do we? Just an update. Uh, pavement project work change order. Lonnie?
Okay, I think we have a list of the changes that we are talking about making. One is deduct, uh, deducting the cost of the original bid contract for motor heights, the street up in that area, due to the fact that it is concrete and it would damage the new asphalt as, as it says now. The other things are milling around the curb at Jacob Point, and also, uh, redoing the walking path at the Jasper Park, the duck pond, and the sheaves around the duck pond. And so the total amount of the work.
And the parking lot.
Parking lot, yes. And the total cost of the change would be sixty-three thousand four hundred and ninety dollars and sixty cents. But when you deduct motor heights of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-five, we would, there would be a difference of thirty-four thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty cents. So as a work order change, here to ask the council to approve this work order change and let, uh, Johnson Payton go ahead and fulfill these other requests.
Questions, Council?
There's no issue using this payton, the splash dollars for this payton to do our walkways and parking lots and such, just.
They want splash.
Okay.
Where's the included in splash?
So any paving can be done? Side lots.
Anything dealing with paving.
All parts.
I'll make the motion, will you approve the change order?
Motion to approve. Want to take a discussion? Being in all favor, vote with your hands. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Council.
Uh, Lonnie, I think we're still, uh, basketball monument at, uh, bank, uh, just a little update on that.
Good drive.
There will be no action taken, and this give the council a good idea of what's going on there, because I think it's kind of got out into the public, and they might know another detail.
Okay, the DOT has requested, uh, some information from the city on our utilities at the intersection of Main and Church Street, and at the intersection of San Muggie and, uh, West Church Street at Community Bank. The, uh, State Championship has a monument in front of Bank of North Georgia at Main Street and, and Church Street. The DOT said that their contractors were concerned about when they put the mass arms up for the new red lights at the location there on Main, that they were concerned about the safety of that monument. The DOT has definitely not, uh, were not obligated to move it. They were just making us aware that the contractor was concerned. And so we have talked to the scoop board, or I have, and to the Stacy Gillen, and they have chosen a place in front of the scoop board building to move the monument to, if we choose, or if the county chooses, or whatever, to move it, relocate it. So we, the mayor has been in contact with some of the different people around, and it's just up for discussion right now as far as we're talking here tonight.
Well, I'll tell you, the other people I called were not happy. And, uh, and if we can leave it there, we definitely want to leave it there unless it is some type of hazard for driving public. And I don't see that being an issue. Uh, I thought it would look better in front of the Pickens County High School gym instead of the Board of Education building, but that's out of my purview, and.
That's where that other one is, that big one that sits right down there from the nineteen fifty-seven?
From the old, from the old school. Uh, but the, but this, this championship was not won at this particular gym, it was still Pickens County High School. But only if it becomes a major issue, and we may have opened the can of worms that we didn't need to, but there was a lot of discussion about it, and I sure didn't want the parties that were part of putting that there to be offended by what was going on without knowing the details. Thank you, Lonnie. Update on city park, Council. We opened the park before Memorial Day weekend. Uh, we still have the items that were mentioned by Mr. Waters tonight as far as paving the parking lots and the trail. And with that finished, we'll add some more vegetation behind the waterfall. Uh, we have planned to add, uh, between eight to ten grills at picnic areas around, and that will be the extent that we, uh, improve the park. We painted all the facilities, new commodes, the bathrooms could stand a little more if it's filled up. They get a lot of use, uh, but that will be an ongoing process, and, uh, you gave me fifteen thousand dollars, and we're probably twelve.
Yeah, well, that's important.
So we, we can get the grill spinning place.
Forty, that one, put into the base of the.
Well, that's, that's true, that's true. But, uh, but we wanted to go, we took fifteen thousand, I wanted to go over and replace all the playground equipment, and the prices on the playground equipment then was thirty-four thousand dollars, and I didn't have the fifteen to get the park in, in, in shape for, uh, safety reasons. Of course, the city, you didn't see all this, but we took out a lot of trees, a lot of limbs that were hazardous, and, uh, we spent three hard weeks over there, maybe closer to a month, so.
Are you going to make the words of law?
No, we, we, we're going to do that, and it is absolutely no safe way of the traffic drive. So we're bringing the walk trail at a slope from baseball fields down to the park, hopefully at an angle, and the paving process will, will actually make a little curve there or swerve, that the angle will be such that a wheel check will go down safely, so. That's an update on that, and we'll keep you up to speed, especially if we get the papers on it. All right, item J, uh, resolution to adopt water conservation plan. Mr. Hall finally got the water.
Evening, Mayor. Before you deny to try to, to pass or adopt a resolution, uh, to, for water conservation, it is part of the plan, uh, through Mr. Turnipseed that the council asked back in December to get our, uh, well permit increased from one million to one point three three million. And also our water treatment plant, uh, permit increased from two million to two point three three million. And this is part of the process of getting those permits is for the council to adopt a water conservation plan, and Mr. Turnipseed has prepared one, so it would be this resolution passed to adopt.
Resolution two thousand seventeen, uh, sixth month, fifth day. Whereas the city of Jasper, Georgia realizes the need to implement a water conservation plan to protect the natural resources of the city and comply with Georgian Environmental Protection Division guidelines, and whereas the mayor and council have authorized the development of a water conservation plan for the city of Jasper dated April two thousand seventeen, we hereby resolve to adopt a water conservation plan for the city of Jasper dated April seven, two thousand seventeen, as prepared by G. Ben Turnipseed engineers, so resolved this fifth day of June two thousand seventeen. Would entertain a motion to approve resolution as raised? A motion to approve? Motion to second discussion? Being in all favor, vote with your hands. Thank you, Council, I think we have a resolution that the council can put their signature on that resolution. Thank you, David. Okay, next item. Environmental information document. Mr. Hall?
And this is just a document, uh, to make the council aware that Turnipseed is continuing on, on the process of getting the wastewater plant, uh, permit increased also from point eight to one point five six. Um, there's only a certain amount of way he'll be able to go before, I think, come up for council, and I'm assuming get some kind of, uh, financial, uh, started on that, some kind of a loan or grant program or whatever. So this, uh, only thing this is saving is, is that they are continuing to move forward. I think there was another amount approved for that, two, like twenty-seven thousand. And that's probably getting pretty close to that, so it's going to get to the point to where, um, I can update the council that they're feeling like that maybe we can do it more by stage this time, and maybe the first stage being about half of what the original amount, uh, I think, dollars now. We're on the council, and we had the workshop that time about wastewater plant, they're talking about eight million. That is down, hopefully, to around four or five. So that's just an update on that, it's counting, uh, and it's a lot of the same stuff as it is to get the wastewater plant, just making sure that, um, you know, nobody's going to, uh, object, uh, you know, to the wastewater plant being doubled or to the water treatment plant being increased.
Okay, this, this, this is the request for the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. And the public hearing date we set by phone conversation the other day, I don't have my calendar.
I'll remember.
And we're advert, we're advertising tomorrow.
The third day.
We're advertising tomorrow, and we'll have, uh, four weeks advertising, and it seemed like around the thirteenth of July. That'll be, it'll be in the advertisement, Council?
Yes.
Okay. Would entertain a motion to approve the advertising for the public hearing? A motion to approve? Motion second discussion? Being in all favor, vote with your hands. Thank you, Council, thank you, David. Okay, we're not done. Wastewater Maintenance Camera.
This is, uh, Santa Cruz Camera that the council has, uh, previously approved in the budget for the maintenance department. I have three bids, uh, for this camera, it's a camera, thank you. And but there meeting is a camera where you can send up and look into the Santa Cruz lines to see what might be blocking, blocking the lines up, so, um, we became three bids, uh, one from Trial Vision in Smyrna, Georgia, for thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy-three. One from Canton Williamson Company, a bid of twelve thousand nine hundred and sixty-three cents. And Nostex out of Clearwater, Florida, has a bid of eight thousand and nine hundred dollars.
Oh, and you're sure of this thing, David?
Yes. Yes, I think one of them might come with, uh, one of these might come, will they come two days and show us what to do? But our personnel are very familiar with these cameras, we've used them. One we got, we've had since early nineties.
Which one's the low bid on that?
Uh, Nostex out of Clearwater, Florida, eight thousand nine hundred dollars.
Do you, do you personally know anything about this particular bike that you're on, you have a gun?
No, but they all have warranties, they all have two-year warranties on them, all of them.
What did I get, nine hundred? Eighty-nine hundred on the Nostex?
Yeah, I got ten thousand. Yes, we got ten thousand, but it's gonna suck by another. That's before one of them.
That's a two, that's a two hundred, right?
Yeah, more than.
Okay, would entertain a motion, Council? Thank you, motion, we approve, approve, approve the purchase of, uh, the low bid on the, uh, uh, maintenance camera. Motion to approve the low bid of eighty-nine hundred?
Yes.
For the maintenance camera? Got a second, any discussion?
This, this will save you, the city a whole lot of time, it also has a located thing that you go down and find out where it's at, and don't have to dig up a small section versus having to dig the whole line up. Very useful residential, I can.
That's good, since we don't have you on.
You got a little hundred dollar payment on that.
Uh, thank you, David. Item E N, Report for Planning Commission, Mr. Underwood?
We've got it, we've got it all right. I don't think we did.
I hope we did.
I don't think we did.
All in favor, vote with your hands. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Council.
Item E N?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, I'm presenting the, Mr. Coley's not in town, so I'll present the, uh, Planning Commission meeting on May the twenty-third.
I'm gonna get you, man. Yeah, go ahead, I'll, I'll catch you, we got company to, um.
On May the twenty-third, the Planning Commission held a meeting to discuss the annexation of parcel number oh-four-one dash oh-five-three, which is two point three four acres located at eighteen sixty Highway fifty-three West, to have the zoning change from HB, which is highway business, to C two. There were three or four people in attendance at that meeting, had a lot of discussion, and at the end, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the, uh, annexation and the zoning. And that is managed up to the council to decide what, what needs to be done.
Uh, once we have controversy, Council, at a zoning hearing, we usually like to take, uh, statements from our visitors, and I, and I see visitors here tonight that might want to make a comment about the annexation and zoning of this particular piece of property. Uh, I would like to recognize the people who may oppose this annexation, who spoke at the last meeting, uh, to address the council, and I'll start out with three minutes. And if you need more than three minutes, you can request it, and if you need more than five, you probably won't get it. So with that, I would like to open the floor for anyone that would like to make a statement opposing the annexation and the designated zoning of said property. If you will, when you stand, give us your name and, uh, what, a little bit about you.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Weaver and the council. My name is Crystal Weaver, and I'm franchisee for Acorn Food Group, Bojangles, and we're a neighbor to this parcel. a neighbor to this parcel in question. Also, I'm accompanied by Mr. Wade Marshall of Calicoon Management Corporation. Who also is here representing Wendy's. Together we make up two of the four corners at the intersection in question. Both locations are locally owned with Mr. Paul Rambler, an owner of Wendy's residing here in Higgins County, and of course myself and my family reside in Higgins County as well. We have a joint concern over the long, over congestion of this particular intersection at Camp Road and State Highway 53. This has been a long concern that was prior to Popeyes ever coming or this property being annexed into the city. Two weeks ago at the planning meeting, Mr. Patton was here with Forside Engineering and he was representing CSD Properties. And he stated a few important statements that I'd like you all to be aware of. One, that the proposed Popeyes, um, would draw approximately 700 cars per day or 21,000 additional cars per month. The second thing was the proposed ingress and egress on State Highway 53, uh, he stated was approved and the planning, uh, commission had asked that important question. Unfortunately, that was false information. Uh, Mr. Keith Day was able to verify that that has not been approved or commented at all. The planning commission did make that recommendation to you based on the information that was given to them by, by Mr. Patton. Um, you know, together we employ over 110 employees here in, in the city of Jasper and, um, and we've served this community for 12 and 15 years respectfully. Uh, this is not an issue with Popeyes coming. Uh, this is not an issue with even a competition coming of, of any degree to this intersection. What we ask is that this intersection is overly congested, accidents are occurring often, uh, my property's been damaged four times, their property has been damaged four times. Um, we already received numerous complaints, uh, from our guests coming in and through and out, and, uh, both of our businesses are dependent upon the convenience factor of time getting in and out of the intersection. We do believe that the city council should seek a traffic study. We believe that accident data should be included, that it should be comprehensive and that you should study whether this annexation and any future growth that could come on the 2.34 acres, uh, is sustainable at this intersection as it currently sits or whether adjustments should be made. Uh, remember the other elephant in this room is that the Popeyes only shows what would take place on half of that property. Rest of that property, I'm certain as they are business owners, they like to sell that as well. Uh, so the, the potential 21,000 cars, if another competitor comes that, that's only over two day parts, they pull an additional 21,000 cars. Um, so there's a bigger picture that we must look at and, uh, we, we urge you to please do so. You know, today I was, I was very, we were very blessed to finally meet with the DOT on our property.
Yeah, they gang up on us. There were like four of them.
I'd, I'd, I'd wait if you don't mind and kind of share, um.
Sure, I'll be brief. Uh, uh, we're all about progress that wins for sure. We're gonna build two new stores this year. We completed two recent remodel, or remodeled two. So we're aware of impact and what we have to do to make sure we can be a good neighbor when we move in somewhere today. And, uh, so I'm, and, and we're all about competition too because, you know, we, we thrive on it. It makes us better. Right. The challenge that we have at an intersection is if it's seven, let's say it's 700 is the figure that's thrown out, additional cars per day. Right. Okay. Some of those cars are already going to be, let's say it's five, or let's say it's four, additional cars per day trying to interact in that intersection. Right? And caveat, let's say that that's one portion of the parcel. If the second parcel goes, that's another, I don't know, however many. Here's the issue, from what we can see, and certainly you see it every day, that intersection can't take 20 more cars a day. And I apologize for being a little emotional about it, but it's a problem. We got a problem with that intersection. We got a big problem. Now, my, my, I know for a fact, if it was new construction, well, not for a fact, but more than likely, if it was new construction and I was Joe New Construction Guy and I came and I said, we'll pop something right here, there would be backlash because of the way that intersection works right now, right now. So the question is, how do we make sure, whatever we get into, whenever we get into it, how do we make sure it's gonna work? Because if it doesn't work, everybody suffers. And I know I'm preaching to the choir, but we are generally, genuinely worried about this intersection. We prepare, I'm not gonna beat a dead horse. I think y'all know where, at least I'm coming from, I think you know where we're coming from. We want to make sure whatever study has to be done is done with the right figures. So in, in, in caveat to that, and I'll, I'll wrap it up with this. We sent a request to the DOT to take a look at traffic pattern, counts, collision, the whole nine yards. And they're gonna be doing a study on that to assist us in hopefully assisting everyone in finding out what can we do to make that intersection. Cause right now, right now it's not working. It's not. And I really appreciate y'all.
In conclusion, if I may, the, um, uh, thank you, Mr. Woody, for that explanation. You know, the Roland and the Coquelin families are, are truly friends of mine. I, I look forward to being a good neighbor to whatever establishment does come, but I do urge, uh, the council to make sure that proper planning is put into place to prevent any future problems. This is already the gateway entrance on Highway 53 to the city of Jasper. We want to get it right. And space is limited and, and traffic is high and we, we don't anticipate that increasing. This problem will only increase in time. This is not an, an anti-Popeyes campaign or anti-growth. This is simply, let's plan this right. The mayor in your, in your session, your work session on Thursday, you know, I know you mentioned that maybe the proper planning from the development wasn't done in the beginning, but we have an opportunity now to rectify that before another development comes and adds to that problem.
Okay. Since you mentioned that, uh, the main problem there is the road that divides your property on this camp road is too narrow. Your, your property is too close to, uh, in order to expand the width of that road. It needs to be a four lane, probably with a, with the traffic that we're having there, probably a four with a turn lane. Uh, but we don't have the space because of the proximity of Wendy's to Bojangles. And, uh, the only space we have available is, is your curbing and your green space between the road 53 and camp and your parking lot. So that's where we have some issues because you and I have discussed in the past how we want to get a D cell lane coming off Camp Road into yours through that power line and the Davis property, who actually owns that property. So, but that's kind of on your side of the road and on the other side of the road, and I'm not trying to be a advocate here and I need to shut the heck up because I'm trying to, I've been trying to annex every property I can find since I found it, but, uh, but the other side of the road was a Pepsi, uh, company years ago and if it was a Pepsi company today with those big trucks trying to get out of the road, we'd really have a problem. Uh, but I'm gonna stop there and not try to sway, I have a terrible tendency to sway. But do you have anything else to offer?
Well, just with all due respect, that's only 25% of the problem. I mean, truly, I have video that shows that the backup goes from, um, you know, traffic coming eastbound, uh, towards Jasper. Uh, you know, it backs up several times before they get to that light. Uh, I know that we've all, you know, hopefully looked at Highway 53, uh, you know, widening. And fortunately with the proposed plan from Popeyes, because there is no land, um, on the Wendy's side, if that right D cell lane is granted to Popeyes, then that 53 will have absolutely no room to widen in the future.
And when you look at the plan.
Camp Road is only 25%.
And when you look at the plan, you see how, although the proposed plan, I mean, it's rough, it's rough money. If you look at that, you see it's, it really does a great job getting people into Popeyes, which it should, it performs tremendously like that. Problem is, what are they gonna do when they leave? And that's where it's trouble. And, and once again, and I don't want to be a little more speech, not a competition thing, not a Popeyes thing, we're all about competition and grow, 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 because that's what we do. But we gotta make sure it's gonna work.
And, and I do, you know, I don't want to just come here with a problem. We, we really do, um, we are seeking solutions and, uh, and we propose that there's three different ways to pay for the solutions to fix that intersection. Uh, the first one being something that's called a DOT Quick Response Plan. Uh, that Quick Response Plan, uh, would qualify for anything that would help facilitate traffic, uh, where there's over congestion on the state highway, as long as it's under $200,000. We do believe, uh, uh, relatively speaking, that, that that's worth investigating to see, uh, an engineered plan to see if this would be under 200,000 and that would, uh, that would be a possibility. The second thing is of course squashed is it would apply to transportation and, and roads that are overly congested on our gateway intersection. And the third thing is, uh, is if this study comes back from DOT that, that shows that there are some safety concerns here and that, uh, what myself and, and Mr. Marshall were speaking to is, is true about the accident that occurred, uh, then perhaps they can use some DOT safety funds also.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm here representing the planning commission. They, they talked about an annexation and zoning application only. Popeyes was not, they're, they're trying to get the property zone into the city of Jasper as C2 and there's a number of permitted uses for C2 property.
Right.
So, uh, we didn't, we, I didn't bring this to the council to approve this or disapprove this with a Popeyes on it. That, that had nothing to do with what we did at our meeting.
Once it's annexed in, they'll have to meet planning regulations, you can pick it in and out and get DOT approval for them. Okay, thank you. Evidently, this is the right side of the church, this is the left side of the church. Uh, I'd like to recognize anyone who would like to speak, and since they're aboard here, I'm gonna leave you to about three minutes, uh, if necessary.
I don't have much time. I'm Jeff Froden.
Would you introduce yourself?
Jeff Froden.
I know better than you have to say.
Oh, I don't see where there'd be 700 extra cars coming in because somebody, if they're gonna eat, they're gonna come into the city of Jasper anyway. And there is, I mean, like, I mean, I eat at both places about, I mean, two, three times a week. And you can't, like going in Wendy's, Wendy's, if you come from Home Depot, you have to cross into the wrong lane and come into Wendy's. I mean, that's, that's another problem to make, but if you build it far traffic, like the other side would be built for, if it's approved by the DOT and y'all, it would be safe and, you know, there shouldn't be a problem with traffic.
Are you saying the other side of the road's not gonna affect?
No, no, it shouldn't be, there won't be that many cars added. There's not gonna be 500 people come in just eating Popeyes or at a Bojangles or at any.
Where'd that never come from?
That's one, she had 700.
That came from Mr. Patton. And that's, those are Popeyes figures, uh, for, for an average location.
They can run the demographics and do the site survey calls.
It was confirmed by DOT at 676 today.
700 freaking me out too, but the challenge with the annex.
700 would eat me. It ain't gonna add 700 cars. It don't matter if a lawnmower goes there, because those people are gonna eat somewhere in city Jasper.
Okay, but, okay, uh, what I was about to say, your property was once a Pepsi.
Yes, property.
And since that time, it's been several other.
Yes, but all these, yeah, yes, been a few times.
And, uh, how many acres is it again?
2.3 something. 2.34.
Uh, so it was actually recognized as commercial property before Wendy's.
Highway Business.
Uh, before those margaritas, before Cantina, before Home Depot, before any of that, Pepsi was sitting there as the only commercial property, uh, past the Amoco, what used to be the Amoco, if you come and look at it, uh, you have to sit in Wendy's, uh, dining area and look out and say, how'd all this happen? And look, as you're looking over that traffic, I kind of enjoy it because we've been partying to that over the years.
Yeah, we're excited, yes.
And so, uh, but anybody else would like to make a statement in favor of the annexation efforts?
I'd like to be. David Stenakie, I work for Forside Group Engineering. Uh, Mr. Patton and I work together. I'm actually gonna be, will be the, uh, license engineer that will design this site. Um, and Connor and I worked together to submit this application with Sonny, so I appreciate Sonny's all, all this help and giving this application to where we're at. As Sonny said, we're.
Wait, are you gonna say 700 more cars?
I, I can address that. And I will. Yeah, so, uh, um, when we submitted this application, as Sonny said, we submitted the application to annex 2.3 acres from the county into the city, uh, because the city were, the city and county, uh, both require, if we're going to redevelop the property, we have to connect to public utilities. The city's a public utilities. In order to connect to public utilities, we need to be in the city.
That's, that's fact.
Yes, that's fact. So there's, uh, four corners of this intersection. Uh, the intersection was approved by, improved by DOT, uh, y'all know about it, 99, 2000 dish? Yeah. Um, the, the Pepsi property that was there, I'm not sure what it was operating as at the time, had two driveways on Highway 53. DOT closed the one nearest to the intersection, that was a safety close, and kept open the one furthest away from the intersection, uh, to get out of the, um, the functional limits of the intersection. That's, that's their intent. So they closed the one closest, so they already lost one driveway. Um, and, and then improved and by doing so, that was, I think partly in, in part with the Home Depot and lost in the Kroger development. And there's 400,000 other square feet of retail, we're, we're 2,000 square feet, so if, if there's a traffic problem, there's several hundred thousand square feet that are probably contributing, not, not the two, but traffic's not the issue, we're annexing the property. Uh, that being said, the approved driveway locations, just to mention on a few things that the opposition had, approved driveway locations, those were constructed driveway locations that are aligned with driveways opposite the street, which is the only way DOT will approve driveways. Um, there is, uh, Mr. Keith Day, the DOT representative that I, I believe, uh, they spoke with, was probably referencing a separation distance requirement for highway, for a state highway of a certain speed limit, and our driveway will not meet that separation distance. Um, those are recommended design separations, um, and in certain specific, in certain situations, if the opposing driveway across the street is, uh, present, you don't meet the spacing requirement you align with the driveway. That's to limit as many conflict points as possible with intersections. So to address the driveways are not in approved locations and Mr. Connor, uh, Mr. Patton spoke incorrectly, uh, that's not true. Uh, we spoke, we've, we've been working with DOT, we're aware of that. They have asked us to provide a right turn lane into the site. That's a requirement of theirs. We're gonna generate enough traffic to require a right turn lane, uh, traffic. We're not here talking about traffic, but since it's been brought up, uh, the ITE Institute of Traffic Engineers, uh, has placed a summary book for Walmart and, well, for large-scale retail, for restaurants with sit-down, for restaurants with drive-through, for hotels, for city council buildings, how many parking spaces you need, how many traffic, trip, trip generations you will generate. Um, the numbers that we quoted were, uh, direct from the ITE book. We haven't run specific counts for this property. We haven't done a traffic study for this property. We haven't gotten there yet because it's not in the city. It's, because right now we can't access public water and sewer on our property. Um, so in order for us to get there, we need to annex the, the property in the city.
And you're, and you're saying, in this conversation, you're basically saying you're concerned about the traffic flow as much as your neighbors.
We will be, when, when we get to the technical design of the property, um, we will, uh, work with the, all of the city's, uh, technical ordinances that we're gonna have to meet in order to get a permit to build this, and we'll work with all of the technical requirements that DOT is gonna ask us to meet in order for us to gain access and get a driveway encroachment permit in order to build the driveway for this property. So we're not trying to not produce a traffic study, we're trying to annex a property in so we can get water and sewer access from the city, uh, so we can meet all of the technical requirements that the city and DOT will ask us to meet.
Okay, so, and you're willing to be a partner with your neighbor on the other corner?
Absolutely.
In the fact that there needs to be more space and if you've placed your Popeyes building so close to the state route 53 that you would have to take curve, gutter, whatever, in order to widen state route 53 for another lane, which we have three lanes there, I believe.
Three lanes currently.
Uh, and it's, it's taxed quite a bit, but, uh, McDonald's on the other side of the road, when they, uh, did their improvements, that, there's enough room there for state route 53 on the east side to be widened somewhat. Of course, the cemetery's on the other side, you can't take much of. Of course, the cemetery's on the other side, you can't take much of that property, but we don't have that at that intersection. And Crystal, I was one there when this was being designed, when Home Depot was designing, and I recall very clearly the day that I was there with the Compton County Commissioner and Lou Chastain with the DOT, and knowing how close your building was, and yours still was, were basically a figment of someone's imagination that it's gonna happen in Wendy's, it was rumor that it was gonna happen there, and when it started being built, and I saw the close proximity you were to the 53, and Wendy's is the smallest parking lot I've ever seen for the amount of people who wants to eat at Wendy's.
Yeah, it's like God wants Wendy's to be eaten there, or something. I don't know why else it works, but it's tight.
But you actually have room to expand your property in the north or southwest, or if you were to purchase more property, I believe there's availability there, isn't there? A little?
Wendy's?
Yes.
I don't know.
You may have to buy somebody out, but there's...
We might have to get into Mexican food, isn't it?
Might be a merger.
It may not be a back end.
Might be a merger.
Starting here.
But with that, I'm gonna try to get to the point where, I've never seen an annexation that I didn't like, so it's hard to talk me out of one. But with this presentation and the recommendation, how do the Planning Commission recommend? What did they recommend?
They recommended it be approved.
Okay. And they listened to all sides, basically, I was not there for a reason, I wanted to be here for this meeting instead of that. But with that, Council, I ask you to ask any question you'd like to have?
The turnaround on the DOT study, like you requested, is there kind of a general timeframe that you can give me?
You know, I don't know, we just had the meeting this morning, and I just, excuse me, let me stand up. We just had the meeting this morning, and I just popped a letter off today, but I can follow up immediately on that and get back to whoever I need to, if I need a home time table.
And is the willingness of them to cooperate, is that leverage to get this done maybe a little quicker? I'm just asking you your own questions, but...
You know, I think, as far as willingness, we're certainly willing, we're just willing in any capacity. And that's why we met with the DOT, because we want, we want everybody to have the right numbers. And I completely understand what you're saying about 700, I'm with you, I'm with you on that, understand what you're restrained to, but we had to work off something to promote the meeting with the DOT, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
Well, it was a number that folks get.
Yeah, we need, we need good numbers, so we can make good decisions, right?
Anx and...
If you want to give me an email to respond, we'd be happy to.
Same. Same kind of question. Okay. Anything to respond to those statements?
We, as a future property owner and how this, pardon me, we are the engineers, we're working for a developer who is putting a site together for Popeyes corporate. Eventually, I'm not sure if Popeyes is going to immediately franchise that to another local business owner, or what their corporate intentions are, so I'll take that off. But you may have another local franchise owner for Popeyes.
I think it would have been easier if you'd walked in and said, "I'd like to annex my property in the city of C2," because I've been trying to annex within for 25 years. And if they'd asked that question, Popeyes has become the item, it could be a daycare center or whatever if it's in C2.
Our, just to address that, our application was to annexes to C2, period.
How's Popeyes?
When working with Sonny, we were working together, let's please show us a site plan, so we can show you what we're gonna do here, and, you know, in the top corner, we were at Popeyes.
You drew that.
Probably should have scratched that out.
Sonny's fault.
But we are just annexing this in the C2, and certainly willing to work with all the technical requirements of DOT in the city to produce.
I'd like to recognize, Mr. Brock.
Just in the interest of good practice, I'd like to say that I have potential conflict, because I've dealt with some property pretty close to this intersection, and I just wanted the record to reflect that I identified that conflict.
Thank you.
I think I'd rather have been said, we're just, we're here tonight for the council to vote on annexing this property in, as C2, regardless of whatever in the future wants to be put on the site.
Then it will follow under all permitted uses for C2, which, you know, restaurant and mall, also a cemetery.
And dealing with the DOT is gonna be an... It's gonna happen, it's gonna be a definite, that DOT is gonna be calling this as well as the city of Jasper. And we do recognize the other side of the street as having issues, and Count Road, I wish it was a four-lane road, I think it could be a six-lane road, but everybody wouldn't wanna go that route. But that will have issues in the future, but today, we're talking about annexation, and Popeyes was put on a plan that brought that into the picture, but it could be Burger King, it could be anything, God forbid it be Burger King.
Not Burger King.
I always say, if one lawyer comes to town, he goes broke, two lawyers come to town and get rich, same for the evidence. But with that, I would like to ask for a motion, and let's move forward one way or the other.
Make a motion to approve, report, approve the request from the zoning and planning commission.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Being in all favor, blow your hands. Thank you, Council. Thank you, thank you, and we're gonna worry about the traffic, because you're citizens of Jasper, and y'all pay taxes, and we really appreciate it.
We appreciate y'all.
Thank you, we appreciate your time.
Yeah, absolutely. And let us go along.
Thank you, Sonny. We have one more item.
Mr. Tickett recommends staying on the road, so because of the conflict.
Before you go, Sonny, I'm gonna go back up and hit the Marble Hill well, just where you're at. Item A, if I quit doing the old money agenda, I would see that. Marble Hill well, Council, we talked about that at the council meeting, and the recommendation of Mr. John Klein, after studying the well pump test more diligently, has recommended that we not do the pump test, which will save the city around 17,000 that we approved, and, but, just to give you a heads up, Mr. Klein called me just this afternoon, and I meeting, I meeting him at 7:30 Wednesday, and we're going to meet Georgia Marble representatives in the White Stone area, where they feel they may have more potential water than we would at Marble Hill. So, looking forward to that meeting.
Marble Hill favorite.
Well, Emily's always called Georgia Marble up in Pickens County. Okay, but that's just another bit on that, Council, I'm sorry about Mrs. Giffen over at item A. Thank you for being with us tonight. Item B, alcohol license request.
I have an alcohol license request to the council, it's Ms. Salmini Rugula.
Good job.
Pretty good. They signed the Dunn's North store at Topping Rock, and they want to put the beer and wine license in their name, according. And she has, I have, I was in tonight with the fingerprint request that she had made to the JPD, and it came back that there's, there are no outstanding things that would keep her from getting a license. And she is advertising in her store now, according to our regulations, with a sign telling what she's doing. And I asked the council...
Continue, make a motion to continue.
Yes.
In fact, a motion to continue the advertising process.
Moment.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Being in all favor, blow your hand. Item P, I requested at the last workshop, we discussed the possibility of forming a blind committee, and I'd like to recognize John Faust, who supports this action, and what we may, what may lead us towards.
Mayor, I would like to do a point of commitment, please, Mr. Fickett, along with the committee. We've looked at several different ordinances from different towns that's close to Georgia, we will make what's the right ordinance for Jasper, but if we're gonna spend all this money and time to try to fix up downtown, we might as well fix up all of Jasper. And so, this committee, hopefully, will get some recommendations that will bring it into business, make the community look more attractive, and make Jasper more prosperous.
We call it, for the time being, Black Committee Concerned, and I'd like to recognize Ann Snady and John Faust as members of this committee, and you can report at your leisure to this council as to what you find and want to present, maybe more Georgia ordinance.
Mr. Fickett, being low.
Mayor's report, economic development report, Jerry, take the topic.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I know it's a long interview, so I'm gonna try to cut to the chase. First of all, I want to, the item that I was gonna mention in closing, I'm gonna go ahead and mention on the onset, based on the conversation that y'all just had, and that was I wanted to convey a personal thank you from a chamber board member, with the actions resulting in the removal of the cooler from the property on West Church Street as you're coming into 515. So, this was something that an individual found, and I, the assumption was made that the city took action that resulted in the removal of that, so they wanted me to convey thanks, and just to act like you're in economic development, and whether you had anything to do it or not, just to say yes, thank you, and I'll pass that along to them. So, I did want to mention that, because I do applaud your actions, I do think improving the look of the community will help improve us from an economic development standpoint. Just a couple things I want to share very quickly, the latest unemployment figures intake, that our employment number is at 4.3%. Typically, within our region, we rank about number three, numbers, the counties that are at the second spot, there's usually tied there, two counties that are usually tied there, so this is pretty consistent. At the end of the day, what this means is we have 631 people that need jobs, so even though that is still a good unemployment figure, and it is competitive within our region, there still is demand for, for increased economic development and job opportunities. The other thing I want to share with you was some information supplied by the County Planning and Development Department, and for this month, the main activity is they had 41 building increase, 41 building permits, which is an 8% increase over the last year. Kind of by contrast, they only had six permits for site-built houses, which is 63% down from last year, so they had 16 in May. So, although, you know, we will see a lot of activity happening within the community, I still think we're probably lagging a little bit in the housing arena, and I just want to share that with you. Any questions or comments about any of those items?
Council.
Couple things, again, very quickly, we have, you know, our tourism efforts are really targeted at retail support and creating demand and keeping people there, as well as bringing people in, and as we have new establishments coming in, I think this is even more important. So, two items I want to share with you, is that we have a film opportunity, this is one that's, they've come to the community a couple of times already, it's an independent filmmaker, they do have new financial backing, they're looking at doing a film throughout Jasper and Pickens County, probably in November, they would be in the community for 30 days, they would base here, so they would be utilizing housing, food, whatever needs that they need for their sets, they would be buying it locally, there would be some opportunities for individuals for extras. So, something like this is where we have a real economic, I think, return on our tourism efforts related to film opportunities. So, I'll give you more information about that as it moves forward, but again, it's sounding very promising, and hopefully, this good financing will come forward and not falter this to come to fruition. One other thing I wanted to share with you, last year, we had some events that we called Winter, or, excuse me, Wednesday Social, the last one, we had a very nice one, we had tables and chairs set up at the green space at the end of Main Street, it was very well attended, brought a lot of people out, kept a lot of people in town. This summer, we're going to be having what we're calling Summer Socia, the format will be very similar, they will be on Thursday evenings instead of Wednesdays, I think that will make it easier for more people to attend. We have created some brochures that outline the four events that we're gonna be having, excuse me, the five events that we'll be having this summer, and we're starting off, I think, very strongly on June 22nd, Thomas Fountain will be our entertainment for the evening, and I think, again, I think that'll get us off to a strong start. Formats will be very similar, we'll have tables and chairs set up on the green space at the upper level, probably have a food truck and a dessert truck down at the lower level, and again, music featured prominently, and so, I'm excited about that. We met sometime, it's been about a year ago, I think, and Councilmember Ann Snady was very instrumental in arranging a meeting with Ball Ground, and we discussed their efforts, and one of the things that they really talked about was the need to have repetitive events that people can count on and know that it's going to take place, to get the draw, so we've taken those lessons and we've put them into place. So, that's what I had to share this evening, but I'll be glad to answer questions without any other topic at this time.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. I'm in for it.
In your pocket, and you have a financial report for May of '17, and at this, at the end of this May of '17, we should be at approximately 41.67% of our budget. Expenditures and general fund are at 30, plus to 35%, which is good. We collected loss, which is local, like, sales tax, not squashed, at current month, $93,310, compared to last year, the same month, $85,257, so we had a good month. Year-to-date, $462,221 versus $428,412 prior year. Technology charge fund, we spent approximately $6,200, and that's for the police laser that y'all approved. Moving on to hotel and motel, we collected approximately $8400 last month. Squash, we collected $72,612 last month, which brings us to cash balance of $785,878 at this time. Water fund, we're at approximately 39% of our budget, compared to 41.67%, is what we should be at this time, so that's, that's good for expenditures. At the very back, our list is of checks that have been written over $5,000, and I think they're pretty explanatory, I've written out the explanation for the reason for the checks, if you have any questions, so let me know, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Questions, Council?
Lonnie? Say hi. I'm sorry. Go with the team.
I was just...
Oh, appreciate it. Lonnie?
Hey, Council, as far as animal control, we had two dogs, one of them has been camping out up here at the depot, and then finally, after several days, got it trapped, it's at shelter, they're gonna hold it for 10 days, it's already calmed down, where people compete, everybody's going good there.
Is it a little beetle?
Yes, a little beetle crossed. But we did, I did get it trapped, and after 10 days, if the owner don't come forward, then it'll be put up for adoption. We had another dog in Crystal Creek, it was creating some problems, but we found an owner for it, and those problems have been corrected. We had two feral kittens on Main Street, two individuals tried to catch them, both individuals got bit, and so, they were transferred to the...
How y'all doing?
They were transferred to the animal shelter, the health department notified, they've been quarantined for 10 days, they seem to be very healthy at the end of 10 days, they will be put up for adoption if they're not sick or showing some signs of illness. So, that's it.
Or point someone else.
Or not someone else.
Questions, Council?
Thank you, Mayor.
Did you talk about our intersection, did you have the death microscope in your earlier report?
No, no, no.
Give me a quick update on that, because that should be moving.
Okay, the gas company, I have not heard from them as far as when they're gonna move the gas line, they will be putting a turning lane coming east on 53, they will be putting a turning lane to turn into Holly Street, be 339 feet long, so we're hoping that will help some of the congestion in that area during school hours, but we're waiting on the gas line to get moved.
Thank you, Lonnie. Chief Low, item D?
Good evening, American Council. The Gas Police Department answered a total of 842 calls from Highway 1 Center for the month of May. One Center for the month of May. Responded to seventy-four motor vehicle accidents, received two citations for the fog, seven speeding, three seatbelt, one childless, two shoplifting, three uninsured motors, thirty-three miscellaneous violations, three suspended or revoked. Georgia State Patrol has totaled eight, two citations for a grand total of one hundred forty-four citations in city court. Total of fifteen state ones, taken by the department on one simple assault, Mr. Mayor, two simple battery, Mr. Mayor, one simple battery violation, felony felony, simple battery violation, Mr. Mayor, terrorist threats, criminal trespass, two theft by nature, Mr. Mayor, one obstruction, one felony shoplifting, one prescription fraud, one drunken public, one disorderly conduct, one for stalking. This land has called in thirty-seven long calls, sixteen disorderly, seven harassment, six trespassing rulings, one hundred and sixty-nine suspicious activity calls, and forty-three domestics and a dedicated funeral burial.
Questions? Thank you, Chief. Chief Rock?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm about making a paper airplane out of a report, I suppose it could contain pressure. For the month of May, the city's fire department responded to one hundred and twenty-three murders. Those were no trucker fires inside the city, one outside. No vehicle fires in, two outside, no grass or brush fires inside the city or outside. Eleven motor vehicle accidents with injuries inside, one outside. Forty-three emergency medical responses in, forty-two outside. Seventeen other calls in, six out. And at the end of the month, six hundred and seventy-eight calls. Honorable citizens looking for three sets of plans for construction or renovation, can help with any inspection.
Questions, Council? Thank you, Chief, thank you. John, J Y S A?
Football camp starts on July the tenth, it's gonna be a hundred and seventy-five dollars for kids to play football, sign up early. The working camp, it's gonna cost them a lot. Same way we're treating, starting to, they'll build a J Y S A dragons dot org, all the silent information is there in the camp.
And I met with the, one of the members of the maintenance of school, was sworn in that they're looking at preparing plans for this, for coming. No other business, Council, I'm just gonna make a motion to adjourn after, I thank all the guests that we had here this evening, thank you for being here, it's always quiet, entertaining when we have this many, with this many items on the agenda, so thank you so much. Being that, no other business. Make a motion with you. Thank you.